I'd like to call this meeting the Alexander County Board of Commissioners into session. At this time, I will be leading us in an invocation and Commissioner Andrew Ferguson will lead us in a pledge of allegiance. I'd ask everyone to stand and remove your caps.
Our kind and most gracious heavenly Father, we appreciate the opportunity to be having this country, to have these meetings and to go about our business in a way that we are free to do so. Lord, we'd ask that you be with our military personnel both at home and abroad, be with our federal, our state, and our local leaders, be with those who have come here tonight, Lord, ask them that they remain to go back to their places of residence in a safe and secure manner, be with this board as they try to make the decisions that is in the best interest of this county, and we'd ask thy blessings upon those who are sick and afflicted, for we ask all those things in thy name. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all around.
You may be seated. At this time, I'd like to call upon Commissioner Jennings, who will have a special recognition at this time. Mr. Jennings?
Thank you, sir. I would like Hayward Bowman and his daughter Louise Fox, to come up to the podium. If y'all will just stand here and turn that way just for a minute, if you'll just turn that way just for a minute. I have to tell something that maybe I shouldn't say that Louise, his daughter, told me right before I came to the meeting. The only way they got Hayward here was they told him that I was getting an award, but my award is giving him the award. And if you don't know Hayward, he's been a fixture of Alexander County and especially of the Wittenburg area, and especially, most especially, of Bowman's Grocery for, since 1956. And I was born, I don't mind telling everybody, I was born in 1945, so I was a little shaver, as my daddy used to call, and we had a cabin on the lake down where the dusty ridge access area is. And we would always stop at Bowman's Grocery to get what my daddy called a belly wash. And a belly wash was a Nehi grape or an orange or stuff like that, and so we'd go in, stop in, and you'd go into the store. And didn't have a Coke vending machine, they had an icebox, so you just stuck your hand down in there if you could find the right one quick enough before your hand froze off to get one. But, so I've known Hayward for a long time. I want to tell you a little bit about his family. He has four daughters, Louise being one, and Louise, what are the names? If you can step over here and tell me the names of your three sisters, that'd be great.
If I don't forget them. Louise, Louetta, Louiba, and Jerry is the boy, Geraldine.
Okay. And I'm not going to ask you to name all the grandchildren and the great-grandchildren, but I'm just going to tell you the numbers. He has eight grandchildren, 16 great-grandchildren, and one great-great-grandchild.
I think we forgot some of them, but that's okay.
Well, that's why we didn't name them, that way they won't know who was left out. He's been very active in his community, as I said before, and some of that activity includes when Smyrna Baptist Church built their new sanctuary and expanded, Hayward and his family donated land so they could expand their church, which was a very philanthropic thing for them to do. He used to drive a pet dairy truck, and if y'all, I don't know how many of you have lived and how long you've lived in Alexander County, and might go and ask for a show of hands, but Alexander County used to be a big, big, big dairy county. And there used to be Dairy Days on the Courthouse Square. And all the dairy suppliers, if you will, Pet Dairy, Biltmore Dairy, so forth, they'd give away ice cream and chocolate milk and all that stuff, because there were so many dairies in Alexander County. To give you an idea of one that was real close where the post office is now, there used to be a big house there, big two-story house, built in 18-something. The Thurston family, if some of you remember Dr. Thurston, they had a dairy there back in the early 1900s. But Hayward was one of the longest-serving, if you will, dairy men in the county. He ran a dairy for 66 years and was a farmer for 66 years. What I remember about him, because I would pass him and still do today, going to and from work or to and from town, you'd always see him on a tractor, always working, working real hard. And not only being a hard worker, he's also a gentleman and a nice man. And they're few and far between today, not casting dispersions on anybody in the audience, but I'm just saying, we're honoring Hayward tonight. But Hayward, I would like to read the plaque that we are going to give you. It's a key to the county. "The Alexander County Board of Commissioners bestows this, the key to the county, upon Hayward E. Bowman," and I'll tell you where the secret place where all the money is too later on, if we can find it, "in appreciation of his many years of dedicated service to the citizens of Alexander County, presented June 23, 2014." And this is for you. If you'd like to get one of Louise and Hayward by themselves, that'd be fine.
What about if my family comes up here?
I was gonna say, why don't you bring the whole family, that way everybody can see how big the family is. Get them all up there.
Hey, Daddies, come on.
Y'all brought a bus, didn't you?
A bus.
Here, if you'll hold this.
Oh, okay. Well, you stay looking around here. Wait, Daddy.
You got it, I'm on it.
Just so you don't fall, turn right around.
There's quite a few more, but this is...
I want to know who the boss is.
Hey Daddy. Does that work? I need to squat down.
That's why I got back there.
He said that's why I got back there.
One, two, three, one. One, two, three, one more. One, two, three. Thank you.
We could've been two of them, they could've seen you.
Do you have anything you want to say?
He may be ready to go. Sometimes he's a little slow, but he always knows where he's wanting to go. Like they said, he's been a stalwart in this county for a long time. This is hard for me.
You're doing fine.
I just want to thank everybody that had a part in this, that comes and helps bum with Daddy, and enjoys the ice cream. Even though it's too hot to dip most of the time, they still dip ice cream. Well, we do, Daddy doesn't, but he eats it. So I just want to thank everybody here. Words can't express how I feel. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda tonight, oh, excuse me. Gentlemen, you have before you the agenda, and I'd ask for a motion to approve the agenda as is.
I'll make a motion, will you approve agenda as presented?
Second.
Motion's made, and second is in discussion. There being that, all those in favor, keep raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, and you all will notice they have one seat empty tonight, and Commissioner Moose had an engagement that she couldn't miss as the reason she's not here that was pre-planned a while back. On the agenda tonight, item number one, the July 4th celebration, calling Mr. Matt Cooksey, Habitat for Humanity.
Thank you for having me again to give an update on it. I was told I had to do a joke though and let y'all know that this is the South, so we're a little slow, so it's the July 5th celebration. So I figure I'll get in trouble after I say that, but it is going to be on July 5th, and so it is the 4th celebration, but it is going to be done on the 5th. And it is in place, and things are happening, the fireworks are planned out, and the county has, by the way, been absolutely wonderful to work with, all the people in the county, to getting that organized. And so the fireworks will be at the high school on the practice field, and you can sit in the grandstands and watch them, and over, anywhere your lawn chair will let you sit in as well, in the distance, you can sit and watch the fireworks. There's no charge for it. There'll be a parade at 10:30, it'll be starting in front of Adams Funeral Home in that area right there, going up the back street there, and ending at the town park in Taylorsville, and there'll be field games. And we've been working on them today and finalizing, getting all the materials together, and it's sort of an old-town fashion, old-fashioned celebration. So there'll be three-legged races, sack races, tug-of-war, all the things that many of us might remember from our childhood of doing in activity. And there'll be vendors out there selling ice cream and hamburgers and hot dogs and those types of things. And there'll be craftspeople showing their crafts that they've made as well. So something I hope everybody will look forward to and come out and support. Has anyone got questions?
Sounds like it's falling into place.
I hope so. It's the first annual, so we'll see.
We have good weather also.
I've got fingers crossed on that, too. So we're hopeful for all of that, but we'll see, and I hope to see everyone out there.
Very good. Thank you, Matt. Item number two on the agenda tonight is a public hearing in regards to text amendment 14-1CR, Commercial Recreation Zoning District. At this time, I'll be calling Seth Harris, the Planning Director, John Marshall, Western Piedmont Council of Governments, Planning Director. And gentlemen, at this time, I'll call the public hearing into session. I'd like to remind everyone that this is a public hearing, people have the opportunity to speak, and I do expect everyone that has the opportunity to speak to conduct themselves in an adult manner. And if you have questions, we'll try our best to get these two gentlemen here tonight to answer those questions. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, sir. This is text amendment 14-1 for a Commercial Recreational Zoning District. It's been a process to get to this point. We've had several meetings, and we've been talking about this for a while, but we finally contacted the Council of Governments in Hickory to come up with a solution, and that's what's before you tonight. The purpose of the Commercial Recreational Zoning District is to allow for activities typically associated with resort areas, including recreation, dining, and lodging facilities. The Planning and Zoning Commission met on June 5th and June 12th to discuss this text amendment. They received lots of public input and made some changes that suggested by the public to that, and that's, again, part of what you see tonight. So that being said, I'll turn it over to John Marshall from the Council of Governments.
We met three times. Do you, I guess I'll, you have a copy of this use matrix. These are extra copies, I don't know if anybody's interested in these. You saw them at the last meeting, but I'll pass these out and take a look at these. As Seth mentioned, we did have, we had a work session with the planning board first, and then we had a public hearing, and then we continued to public hearing, so we've actually met with the planning board three times on this particular zoning district. But if you'll look at the first page of the matrix, I'll start going over that. This is the zoning matrix, existing zoning matrix that was already in the zoning ordinance. And what we did is we tried to fit this in the best we could. And if you see there, everything in red is proposed new. So if you see at the top there, under districts, you see the CR, that is for the Commercial Recreation District itself. And about two-thirds of the way down, you'll see under Community Recreation. If it has an X, that is a, something is a permitted use. If it has an A, that's a permitted accessory use, and a C is a conditional use. Okay, the existing uses under Commercial Recreation, permitted uses are community centers, country clubs, golf courses, greenways, parks and playgrounds, and recreation clubs. We didn't have a whole lot of issue with those particular uses. On the next page, you'll see that we listed as a new use, distilleries, wineries, and breweries. We did have that originally as a permitted use, we had an X in there. We had some objection to that because the citizens wanted you guys to have more control over that, so we said, well, we can make it a conditional use. So we changed that from a permitted use straight out to a conditional use, where it would have to come back, they would apply for conditional use for this particular use, and you guys would review it, there'd be a public hearing, and you'd vote on it. That was the only change on the second page. If you go to the next page, had customary accessory uses, that was already listed across the board as an accessory use. Further down, you can see marinas and dry storage facilities. We did have that as a permitted use and had some objections to that, so we removed it outright as a permitted use. We don't even allow it as a conditional use at this time. A little further down the page, you'll see watercraft rentals, sales, and storage. We also, we had that listed as a permitted use, and with some objection from the citizens in that area, we also removed that as a permitted use. Down to very bottom, places of assembly, that is still allowed as a permitted use in the Commercial Recreation District. If you'll turn to the next page, where it starts, public facilities, the public service facility and public use facilities, we added those both as conditional uses, but public utility facility, we left as a permitted use.
Help me for a minute?
Sure.
Because I wasn't involved in those hearings. Define for me, if you would, public service facilities and public use facilities.
Could be something like a fire department, police department, something of that nature. The public utilities, it could be a substation.
Okay.
Down, under retail, we had delicatessen listed as a permitted use. We changed that to a conditional use. We also had sit-down restaurant as a permitted use, that was also changed to conditional. If you'll turn to the next page, we had gift shops as a permitted use, that was changed to conditional. Further down, souvenir shop, novelty, that was permitted, we changed that to conditional use. Under services, health clubs, that's listed as a permitted use, and gymnasiums as listed as an accessory use. If you turn to the next page, golf driving ranges as an accessory use to the country club. We also had some objection, we had movie theaters listed as a permitted use, that was, had objection, so we also removed that totally. Permitted uses, par three golf course, shuffleboard courts, and then we had three requests to add in there as permitted uses, one swimming pools, tennis courts, and spa slash salon. Down near the bottom of the page, under lodging, boarding rooms, bed and breakfast, hotels, motels, and lodges are all listed as conditional uses. The lodges are a new use, new conditional use that we added. And on the last page, we had no changes. And the planning board did vote to recommend these changes to you.
Any questions, gentlemen?
The Planning and Zoning Commission voted to recommend these changes, was that a unanimous decision, or?
Bud, that was unanimous, yes.
Was a unanimous decision, okay. The, I guess I'm, you know, a sit-down, if, in the commercial, I want to read the definition here. "The purpose of the Commercial Recreational Zoning District is to allow for activities typically associated with resort areas, including recreation, dining, and lodging facilities." Why would you put a conditional use on a sit-down restaurant or a delicatessen when the purpose of it is for those types of uses?
Well, if the restaurant was built in an existing clubhouse or attached, I don't think there was objection. I think the objection from the public came from freestanding restaurants being built.
Okay.
They just wanted the commissioners to have more control over what was, what size and where they're located.
And you guys met three times?
We had, we had a work session early with the planning board. I don't think we met till about 10 o'clock one night, because it was after a public hearing. Then we had a public hearing that went on for an hour and a half or so, and then they continued that public hearing at another meeting, so we met three times.
How many of these changes do you think were altered from the beginning to the end, which is what we have here? How many of those changes do you think were altered because of public input?
Well, everything that we changed was altered because of the public input, and the planning board had some of the same feelings.
Okay.
So basically, what it comes down to is any changes that would take place would end up being a conditional use permit where the person that was wanting to do it would have to file a permit, I mean, a rezoning issue for that conditional zoning request just for the particular thing.
Right. And the uses, we started, we didn't put a lot of permitted uses or even conditional uses in this particular district. This may be something you want to investigate in the future to add to, but this is what we came up with so far with the public input.
Does anybody have any questions?
I don't.
Mr. Mayberry?
Yes, sir.
All right, as this is a public hearing, anyone in the audience who has the opportunity would like to speak, at this time, you're free to do so. And then when you come up to speak, please give your name and state your opinion as to what you think about this public hearing as far as the issue at hand. Yes, sir.
I'm Gary Jennings. I'm president of the Alexander County Families for Faith and Family Values. There's three major concerns that I have. This new zoning proposal doesn't really pass a very simple test for public policy. There's a smell test involved here that I don't think that this zoning law will pass in its fullest. This was done very quietly, and Oliver's Landing was not notified until the last minute that there was a consideration for putting a distillery in at the golf course there. They had very little time to get prepared for the public hearing. I was pleasantly surprised to see that Oliver's Landing did mount a lot of support for the homeowners there in a very concerned way about what was being done for a total residential community with a golf course-only setup suddenly becoming a manufacturing facility, a distillery, if you please. And this has been the case where several of the ABC issues have been involved. We only learned at 12 noon on the day that your commission was being asked to allow an ABC election to be held countywide. We had just a few hours to even begin to answer that situation. I think that if you realize that things just need to be done very openly and very candidly from the very beginning, there's some things that just don't smell right about this situation. I think there's a conflict of interest involved here, a very serious one, I think, for county government to have to consider. Proponents for the ABC system in this county also have folks who sit on boards that help to move this question along and bring it to you even as a passage issue tonight. Members of those sitting boards should reclusive themselves from the decisions that have to be made along these lines. I think that this in its entirety is a very thinly veiled attempt at putting ABC in Alexander County in all of its forms with no real regard for the election that we held and the majority spoke and said, "We do not want to change the present ABC system." I think the question being raised about the conditional use of sit-down restaurants, the delicatessens, et cetera, I think there is an attempt here to put ABC in special use permits in as many places in Alexander County as it possibly can be put. The ABC laws of the state of North Carolina are so broadly written that if you could do a private club, membership-only type of thing, you can get the special use permits that are now being exercised in Alexander County, at our golf courses, and we understand that. But we also see this as being an attempt to spread that and to multiply that in a lot of different ways in and across Alexander County. I think that when you begin to look at this, from the playbook that was originally written for the ABC election, to the forums that were held, and we sat down at the table in the beginning of those forums, and I'm going to be very honest with you, I think you want me to be, we attended the first forum in this room, very well-conducted, everybody was very congenial about the entire process. But I, my colleagues, saw very quickly that it was about alcohol, alcohol, and more alcohol. From the hundred-plus considerations that came up, and I stand to be corrected, but I think among the first five top considerations, three of them was beverage alcohol in all of its forms. I, my colleagues, in good conscience, could not continue to sit on those forums, and then someday for it to be portrayed as we sat in all the forums, and eventually, this all came out of those forums, because we saw where it was headed, and just could not go down that route. I have met with both the town of Taylorsville and Alexander County's economic boards that handle getting more business in Alexander County. I think I have seen that both town and county is doing as much as it can to bring in manufacturing and industry and anything else that would create jobs and a better level of life for our county residents. I just do not think that ABC in all of its forms is going to do that. And I will rest my case on this second point with this. The three things that all of this has brought is you establishing distilleries, breweries, and wineries in Alexander County. That's all that has been brought forth, no industry, no manufacturing, no sustainable jobs out there in the public sector. Those three things are the three things that's being proposed as brand-new industry or whatever to this county. Now, my third and last point, I think we have to realize that with those three concerns for alcohol, beverage alcohol, liquor, beer, and wine, our county clearly spoke. We were told right here in front of this commission that you were going to allow us the voice to say once and for all, or at least for three years. That three years is going to expire. I think that those who are on the other side of this equation have seen that they do not have a hope maybe of getting another referendum except by signature of 35% of the voters, and so therefore, they're going- and so therefore they're going at this thing in a totally different direction. This is very, very carefully thought out and very carefully orchestrated. I think there's some very powerful lobbying that has gone on in this situation, either registered or unregistered as far as lobbyists are concerned. But I, I just have some very grave concerns about where this precedent is going to put us down the road. And I realize that it's going to call for public hearing after public hearing after public hearing. But I think, I think that my prophecy will come true. I think we're going to see that at almost every turn of the road, it's going to be about one of these three concerns: alcohol, alcohol, and more alcohol. I appreciate your time. I really have no questions to ask. If you have a question, I'll try to answer it, but other than that, I, I've said all I know to say. I appreciate your time and your attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would care to speak? Excuse me. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Martha Starnes. I live in Bethlehem, joining Oliver's Landing. My name is Martha Starnes, and I live in Bethlehem and join in Oliver's Landing, and I'd rather be at Mr. Bowman's store having ice cream than being up here. It'd be a lot easier. On May the 30th, 2014, I received, I received a letter to notify Tuesday, June the 5th, of 14th, in the, there'd be a meeting here pertaining to the Alexander Center, Central Alexander Planning and Zoning Commission. I hope you excuse me, I'm so nervous. But anyway, I do have an opinion, and I do live at Oliver's Landing. And when I got this letter on Friday, Mr. Seth Harris, I talked to him on Friday because I just didn't, couldn't understand why we were having a meeting. I just had to know. I have to know everything. Well, uh, on Friday, I told him I'd call back on Monday. Of course, I think Mr. Harris had an accent, so I called on Monday to try to find out what's going on. I called on Tuesday to try to find, find out what's going on. No answer. So I called on Wednesday and Thursday, so I called four times and never did get an answer. I called Thursday morning, Mr. Harris was in, and he said, "I'll call you back." This was before the meeting. Well, I never did get that call back. Well, I live just right across from the clubhouse, and when I wake up in the morning, the first thing I see is the basement at the clubhouse. Well, I can hardly handle the idea of me waking up every morning and there'd be a distillery out there or winery. It's, it's just one of those things I don't understand. We had the AB referendum in March last year. When did majority not count? And it, it's so easy to get rezoned and approved by the commission, that means anyone, any, any business in Alexander County can open up a store to sell beer and alcohol. And if that's not correct, please correct me on that. You see, is it, will it be that easy?
No.
Well, then how is it going to be this easy now? I mean, I, I am telling you, I am ignorant of the law. But I don't think we need people moving down here from other parts of the United States trying to tell us how to live and how to act. I've been in Bethlehem, I'm not going to tell you how many years, but, well, I will. I've been there for 54 years in Alexander County all my life, and I am one of the happiest people in the whole wide world. And I don't, I think if everybody had a mindset, it's all about, it's all about money is what this thing is about. The Lowe's Food Market, the pizza place, it's all about money. It's not for our good, it's for the owner's good. And I hope I have not offended anybody, but I'm not going to profit by having a bottle of beer in my backyard or a jug of alcohol. And, um, and thank you for your time, and I hope you understand, I do not know the law, but this is just my feelings, and this is a lot of other people's feelings who should have rather be down at Hayward's eating ice cream to be up here. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha.
Is there anyone else that cares to speak at this time? Sir, go ahead.
I'm Bud Kaywood. I'm a resident of the Bethlehem community, and I'm also appointed by you to the Planning and Zoning Commission of Alexander County. I've been on that board since July of 2010. However, tonight I speak as a concerned Alexander citizen. My comments and opinions are not those of the Planning and Zoning Commission. They're based on my own personal opinions, experience in business and travel, forward-thinking vision, and extensive economic research. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. French, Ms. Starnes, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. First, let me say I appreciate and respect all of the comments from those people that have spoke before me, and I speak with emotion too, but it's positive emotion. I applaud the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Western Piedmont Council of Governments for the hard work and research in developing this comprehensive plan for potential future economic growth in Alexander County through development of small business, boutique businesses, and specialty shops. I feel very confident this CR zoning ordinance will create an opportunity for business growth. I want to share a few comments from a recent study by an economist from Georgia University, and he says, "Small business represents the backbone of job growth in every community in the United States. And since the end of World War II up to now, Fortune 500 companies have created zero net new jobs. In other words, all net job growth is due to small business. Every business that grows in a community that creates a net growth comes from small business. We need to celebrate that small business and the economic strength it brings to our communities, not discourage it." He also says, "Small businesses may not generate as much money as large companies, but they are a critical component to the strength of local economies. Small businesses are a major contributor to local economic growth. Small businesses possess the ability to respond and adapt to changing economic climates, and consumers tend to patronize local small businesses first." The CR zoning and planning ordinance was not invented by Alexander County Planning and Zoning Commission. It is currently in effect throughout North Carolina communities. However, it is adopted by the Planning and Zoning Commission and adapted to fit the economic needs of Alexander County. It protects the integrity of our residential communities by creating specific ordinances and conditional use regulations while at the same time developing business growth. I've heard the comments of, of both of these people before me, um, and I just want to address one thing. It's pretty obvious that those who oppose the proposed CR zoning ordinance have a clear misunderstanding and uneducated view of its purpose and do not see the value it has toward economic development in Alexander County as they have focused in only one of the 24 uses for which it applies. By opposing this ordinance, they publicly oppose opportunity for economic growth in our communities, and I strongly urge this commission to approve the zoning ordinance CR Commercial Recreation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
My name is Brenda Harkness. I'm the secretary of Millersfield Baptist Church, and I just want to tell you that we have friends on the law enforcement in Alexander County, and they tell us that most of their problems is due to alcohol. And why in the name of heavens would we enter into bringing more alcohol into Alexander County? If Georgia wants to do it, fine for them, but we're not Georgia, we're not North, uh, New York, or we're not anything else. We're Alexander County, North Carolina. I have two special friends that work on the police department, and they tell us that all they get done most of the time is pick up people or arrest people who's been drinking. Why in the name of heaven has alcohol ever done for North Carolina? Only caused problems, death, heartaches, family destroyed. I do not think God is pleased with alcohol in, in the world, but he allowed it, but he also gave us the right, and we voted to put it down. And it's up to you to honor your pledges that you would stand behind the referendum that we did, and I hope you will follow through on your promise. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
You may have a second chance.
Yes, ma'am. As long as you come forward, I'll give you the opportunity. I don't want to deny anybody the opportunity to speak. I do not want to get into a moshling contest, though. I will tell you that now. And if anyone decides they're going to do that, I will call you down immediately, and I will ask you to be seated. That's only fair and respectful to individuals. Go ahead, ma'am.
I resent the comment, "uneducated." That's why a lot of people who have moved into Alexander County are not from, from Alexander County or North Carolina. I am for the growth of Oliver's Landing. I like the idea of having a bed, breakfast, a swimming pool, a tennis court. I just don't like the idea of waking up in the morning, looking out by bedroom window and seeing a distillery in my backyard. It's not, you can, I hope you approve everything except the one with alcohol and the, uh...
Yeah, let me make a statement about this thing, okay? Number one is, there's not going to be any alcohol, okay? The alcohol is already there.
It has been.
And, well, let me finish, please.
Excuse me, yes.
Let me finish, please, okay? Any alcohol or any distillery that would be in the facility at all would have to come back before this board under a conditional use permit, and they'd have to file that permit. And I, I, I don't see that happening. I mean, you know, and, you know, that's, that's where I'm seeing this. This is, and, and these conditional use permits, they're few and far between that's, that's happened in this county. I don't see that there's going to be a distillery right there tomorrow. I mean, maybe 30 years from now, I mean, or 10 years now, or whatever, but I'm just saying that this, this is the thing that's in the, that, that says conditional use. In, in order to have that conditional use, they will have to make an application and come back before the board. And, and I, you know, and this is just totally, the, the changing of the text and the, if I'm wrong, John, y'all correct me, please, because you're the expert. Uh, I'm, you know, but...
...creating the district and creating the uses in that district, but all the conditional uses have to come back.
Have to come back, and those, and that's where they have to come back to, okay?
Thank you for clearing that up. But also, I know that there's been alcohol, which is, is fine, at the restaurant over at Oliver's Landing, but so far, that hasn't kept them above water. They have already gone under two or three times. For three years, my husband mowed the, the 10th tee and the 13th tee because there was no one there to keep up the grounds, and alcohol did not help keeping them open. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, is there anyone else? Go ahead, sir. Just state your name, please.
Uh, yes, my name is John Halter. I am the ex-general manager of Old Still Golf Club. I'm now director of sales and marketing. She is absolutely right, we have closed down three times in the past 10 years or so. What we're really trying to do here is to create a golf course that will have a potential niche. This is just the beginning of getting a permit passed so that we could still get a conditional use from the community itself. What we really do, we have 35% of our staff already is from Alexander County, and we support all local agriculture, farmers, whatnot. We, what we're trying to do here is to create jobs over here, bring more people, support local agriculture, whether it be from farmers to, we even have some gentlemen who are in here whose families actually work for us at the golf course. We're trying to keep the golf course open. We're trying to create an opportunity for Oliver's Landing itself to stay open. It's a very tough market. The golf industry is probably one of the hardest industries to, to keep open with the amount of costs with the hickory economy as it is. It's driven down as bad as it possibly could be. So just to, to ease everybody's mind here, we're not, if, years and years to come down the road, a distillery were to go in there. It's not to say that it would be sold in this county. Alexander County, I'm not, I'm not for alcohol, you know? But what I am for is creating business, and I do believe that if we can at least get this beginning and the forward-thinking going, that maybe in the future, this golf course will have a chance to stay open. Whether we sell any downstairs or we have the option, being a private club, to sell alcohol, but we all take our classes. We make sure that our servers are aware of what people are drinking and what goes in and out of our building. So just to, to ease everybody's mind, what we're trying to do is to, to keep our golf course open. We want it, we have probably 12 employees from Alexander County already, and we're trying to get more. We want people to work. We want to stay open. We want Oliver's Landing to have the best of what we can offer, and we believe in doing so. With your help, we'll have a better chance. I thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Darrell Seaford. I just like to come to the meetings every once in a while, and coming tonight, I had no idea this was on the agenda. And I, what I say is just a response to what I've heard some here tonight. But conditional use means sometime in the future, alcohol could be brought into the county. It'd have to come before the commission and vote it on. I realize that, but alcohol has, brings more problems into a county than any amount of money that could be brought in. And I, I just strongly, I think that it needs to be stopped now. It was voted down, uh, last year, and, uh, I just strongly oppose anything that could help bring alcohol into the county, uh, because, uh, well, bad timing. I just strongly oppose anything that might could bring alcohol into the county. The comment that was said it might not be sold in the county, uh, but alcohol is bad wherever it is. It, uh, brings more problems than any money brought in could be. I've heard a comment made that, uh, could bring in revenue, but do you consider the cost to government whenever alcohol is in, brought into a county? Do, is the cost, are you going to gain that much money whenever you have the cost that problems, uh, that alcohol brings into the county? I don't think it's worth it, and I'd strongly encourage the commissioners to not consider conditional use for this. I thank you for your time, and I apologize for the, for the phone call, but thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, gentlemen. Jamie. My name's Brent Fox. I'm construction manager for BMH Construction and Realty. But to not, but at this point, I want to speak as a taxpayer, as an individual, that this zoning consideration affects certainly more than Oliver's Landing. We have a gentleman here tonight that's willing to invest some $2.5 million into this economy and into this county. He's already invested a big part of that into the Brushy Mountain Golf Course Facility. He's now proposing to you people, to you government officials, if you will, to do a lodging facility on that same property, but it can't be done unless the zoning is, is redone. So he's proposing to build a, a 10-unit hotel, if you will. It's, it's going to be a little nicer than a hotel, a 10-unit lodge, some 3,200 square feet with 10 rooms, uh, one being a handicapped accessible room, uh, to start with. And if in fact that does well, then probably one or two more adjacent to them, which can only be a positive. only be a positive for the county. Number one, because we have nowhere to stay now. We have nowhere to bring outsiders in to come and stay or to enjoy the county. Also, it increases... It automatically creates jobs, automatically. I don't know how many's currently been created in the past six months at the golf course, but I would guess at least twenty. So I would strongly urge you to consider this reconsideration of zoning for the betterment of Alexander County.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, can I...
I'll let you have three minutes. I'll let you have three minutes.
I'm used to the three-minute rhythm.
Okay, three minutes, and that's it.
We certainly would not oppose the housing at the golf course or any of those types of things. We do not have enough nice places to stay in Alexander County as it is. I would ask you to consider the three red-letter entries in this zoning proposal, allowing the conditional use breweries and wineries, the distilleries. If you would... I see that that serves no purpose in the long haul, in the economic improvement in Alexander County. That, I think, is an absolute move in this zoning law to do exactly what we have said to you tonight. I just feel like that there are things here that lead me to believe that while there are many who would question my motives, why is the signage at Oliver's Landing done, changed, and the liquor still is already on the sign, and you all have not passed this law even as yet tonight? That's a big question, my heart and mine.
Mr. Chairman, can I say three minutes?
I'll give you three minutes, and this is the last person. This is it. Because we're getting into he said, she said, we said, and therefore Larry's going to say, and this is it. Last speaker, and then we'll get back to the commissioner's statements. Go ahead, sir.
I think there's a little bit of a misunderstanding regarding the conversation that seems to be the center front right here, which is the distilleries, the breweries, and the wineries. First of all, we already have a winery in our county, which is a legal winery. It falls under agriculture, and that opportunity came available a long time ago, and it is in existence. Secondly, the new zoning ordinance, which was passed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, was created to help protect the residential area of our communities in a way that such allows them to develop businesses in those areas. But under no circumstances, whether a distillery goes in there or a brewery goes in there, can they ever sell that product out of that facility. Because our laws that are already here and the past referendum clearly states it cannot be sold, but it can be manufactured. We also have a zoning ordinance placed, which is called Highway Commercial. And if any one of those specific businesses were to come into our county and to apply for a business license in that highway commercial zone as a distillery and as a brewery, and correct me if I'm wrong, Seth, we would have to approve it according to the laws that we have established, correct?
Technically, it's not listed as a use in the use matrix, so we would have to still add it.
We would have to add it.
Yes, sir.
The point is this: We've already got in place the zoning ordinances that would allow these businesses to come. This is a brand-new ordinance that allows twenty-four different uses. That happens to be one of them that are in there. The point is, even if a distillery were in this county, it could not be sold here. It could not be sold out of that distillery or any distillery. It has to go through the ABC Commission, and it can only be purchased through the ABC store. That's where the misunderstanding has come with what the opposition is putting forward. And I appreciate them bringing up this information, because it's the only way to correct it, is to explain to them that they're not correct in the things that they are approving. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that and to let everybody know that this ordinance is more than just that one issue. Thank you.
All right. Does any commissioner have anything they'd like to say at this time?
Well, I'd like to ask a few questions of Mr. Harris and...
And John.
Mr. Marshall.
Mr. Marshall. If you two gentlemen step back out the front and let the commissioners ask a few questions.
And that's the question I have. If a... If... And let me back up. Most people aren't aware, and very few people are aware, we have a lot of problems with our current zoning laws. We need to revisit those in their entirety, and this is the first step of that. It has nothing to do with alcohol. This is about, you know, residential and commercial zoning. These three things came up. Now, I want to ask a question. If a distillery were to locate or a brewery locate at the Oliver's Landing Golf Course, can they sell alcohol at that... That they manufacture there?
North Carolina law prohibits that.
Can you speak into the microphone?
I said, "North Carolina law prohibits that."
So none of this alcohol that would be produced, if it is produced, could be sold at a restaurant nearby?
Well, not unless the ABC law is changed in North Carolina, no.
So currently, under today's law, North Carolina state law, it cannot be done?
No, but I also want to clarify that there's a step we're kind of missing the point here on. What we ask you to do tonight was look at the zoning district itself, just setting it up in the ordinance. We're not looking at rezoning Oliver's Landing or, you know... I just want to clarify that for the audience, that there's another step, that Oliver's Landing would come forward, or Brushy Mountain, or whoever would come forward and ask for their particular area to be rezoned. That doesn't automatically happen with this district. So there is another process, public hearings with the planning board, and it comes back to you to actually rezone that property. So I think we're forgetting a step in there even before we get to the conditional use. I just want to clarify that.
Right, because this is nothing more than changing the text of the law to change an ordinance showing that this zoning has been changed, and we put this in place.
Yeah, but that does not rezone anything in the county.
Right, doesn't change anything at all in the county at this particular time.
That's a whole 'nother step.
Right, that's exactly...
I just wanted to clarify that, because I think there's some confusion with that.
Yes, and I agree with you. Thank you very much, sir.
If a brewery or distillery wanted to locate somewhere in this county... I know you said that we don't currently have the text in highway commercial uses as well. If they were to sue, would we be able... I mean, we would have to, at some, you know, in some manner, allow a brewery or winery or a distillery in this county. Is that not correct? I mean, these are not illegal businesses, and you're not selling alcohol to people. They are manufacturing. Am I correct?
It would be up to interpretation and that sort of thing, so I'm not sure that we could totally prohibit it. It might be like other uses where you have to allow it somewhere.
That's what I'm getting at. You cannot...
As an extension of your question, because this is the question I have, bottling plants are already allowed in light industrial and heavy industrial. Benheiser Busch came in to open up a bottling plant. Are we saying, well, are we really talking about Coke, or are we really talking about water? Or... I mean, how does that work?
Well, you know, some of the uses in there, they may have a little gray area, and that's where the interpretation comes in. And they just had a case with the Board of Adjustment recently that was brought up for interpretation on the manufactured home extension. And so it may be something like that, where it has to go back to the Board of Adjustment for an interpretation, because it falls into that area, like you mentioned.
But basically, you cannot make a legal product illegal to manufacture. Am I... I mean, we're not talking about a referendum. This has nothing to do with the drinking of alcohol or the sale of alcohol. This is about the manufacturing, you know, a manufacturing business. And Mr. Harris, I got a question for you. Mrs. Starnes brought up a point, and Reverend Jennings, that this was kept very quiet. It was not done in the correct manner. I don't know how it was done, because I've not been part of these conversations. Can you tell me, did you follow the law when you made public notices?
We gave notification like we're supposed to. I mean, we didn't have the exact area for the Oliver's Landing... See, the only reason they received notification was because they were proposing the rezoning then. We took the rezoning to the planning board then also. For the Oliver's Landing case, we didn't have the exact area pinned down yet until a very late date, so we notified everybody within a hundred feet of the actual golf course, which is a hundred and thirty property owners, so...
But this...
That was for the rezoning. There was no notification required for the text amendment.
This has nothing to do with the rezoning. Am I correct?
You're correct. The planning board, because they tabled the... Initially tabled the text amendment, they also tabled the rezoning request until their July 10th meeting, which is when they'll make a decision on the rezoning.
So actually, what occurred as far as the meetings was above and beyond what normally would occur with a text amendment change to a zoning law. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we actually went way out of the way to inform people rather than misinform.
And the plans to do that again for the rezoning case, even though we wouldn't be required to.
And Oliver's Landing, right now, there's a private club there. Do they sell alcohol there currently?
Yes, they do.
Can you tell me how long alcohol's been sold there?
Alcohol's been sold there since we opened in, I guess that would be April. And in Sestifence, we changed the name of the golf club just before we opened.
Can you come up to the microphone, please?
Yes, sir. I'm John Halter again. Just in Sestifence, we met with our marketing group. We had intentions of the golf course being named The Lake Course with the Lake Hickory. Our marketing group came in and said, "There's already kind of a lake course called Lake Hickory Club here." And from that point, when we met with our marketing group just weeks before we opened, I can tell you from all the people who live in Oliver's Landing, they kept hearing one name of the golf course, another name of the golf course. When we actually made our applications, we had made an application under The Lake Course was the name that we did everything under. And with our marketing group and our owner, we decided to change the name just weeks before our opening date, so it's...
But alcohol has been sold there for many, many years.
That is correct.
Okay. But what we're talking about tonight has nothing to do with the sale of alcohol, absolutely zero.
No, sir. It's manufacturing. It all has to be sold to the state, back to the ABC stores. If we were to sell the alcohol that was produced downstairs, being a private club, we would have to purchase it just like we do Smirnoff.
But you're not applying for a conditional use permit. If anything passes tonight, you still will not be able to manufacture any sort of alcohol on the premises.
That is correct.
You can sell it as you have been for many, many years, but you cannot manufacture it.
That is correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else?
So the next step would be, if this is passed, if they wanted to, they would have to apply for the conditional use permit, have a rezoning process.
This is a text amendment changing the law of our zoning.
It adds it into the... Right, and then they would actually have to apply for a rezoning to this district.
Right.
And if that gets approved, then they... And they wanted to put a distillery in there, they had to come back with a conditional use permit.
Right.
But still, they will not be able to sell it in Alexander County?
No, they have to sell it back to the ABC.
They have to sell it back to the ABC, which is a state-run commission. Okay.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
I'm still trying to wrap my head around this alcohol's not in Alexander County business. I mean, we're talking about the manufacturing of a product. Now, this CR designation has a lot of things for it, and the distillery being put in there while not suspect, I mean, it's just one thing. It's the one thing that's holding up this. If that wasn't in there, I can't imagine anybody having any kind of reservations about it.
If that wasn't in there, I don't think you'd hear anybody say anything.
I don't think there'd be anything. We're talking about economic development of manufacturing of a product that's going to be sold outside the county. Am I missing?
Well, you're talking about that, and, you know, in terms... And John, you guys correct me if I'm wrong again, because I'm not the expert, you all are. But this is just a text that changes the way the zoning goes. And in order for them to ever manufacture, a brewery, it has to come by before the commissioners under a conditional use permit. And if they were to manufacture, they cannot consume on the same premises where the beverage or any other type alcoholic beverage is made. It has to be sold to the ABC Commission, and then they distribute it. Okay?
And that's the way all alcohol is sold in North Carolina.
Right.
You have to get permission from the ABC Board in Raleigh to bottle and sell alcohol in the ABC stores that are approved. You can't sell it at the Old Steel Golf Club. You can't sell it at Lowe's in Bethlehem. It has to go through the ABC approval process in Raleigh. So it would never be sold in Alexander County unless it was approved by the ABC Commission in Raleigh. And then possibly, it could be sold if the ABC store in Taylorsville decided to stock it. They could stock it. Is that not correct?
Yes.
This is interesting. This is the same situation that, if I'm mistaken, Jack Daniels has in Kentucky. They're a manufacturer in a dry county. They manufacture their product, export it outside the county. They have the jobs, but it's not consumed inside the county.
It's a dry county.
This is really a non-issue for the county, other than creating jobs and revenue, right?
Does anyone else have anything else?
I have one technical question I'd like to ask, Seth. Wineries... I thought wineries fell under agriculture anyway.
They do, as far as I know, yes, sir. They do.
Wineries do.
All right, so basically, you can't...
Regretting by zoning.
They're already... They have a right to exist.
Right.
All right, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. This public hearing is now closed. Gentlemen, I entertain a motion as to your feelings about the text amendment fourteen dash one CR.
I make a motion that we approve text amendment fourteen dash one CR, commercial recreational zoning district as presented.
Second.
The motion's made in second. Is there any discussion? Does anybody have anything?
I think... And I'm not a drinker, so Reverend Jennings, I'm with you on this. And I've been in law enforcement, so I understand where this alcohol question is about. But we keep on focusing on alcohol, which is a legal substance. And for us to have this, trying to get a moral high ground on the sale of alcohol in the county, or even the manufacturing of the alcohol in the county, it's a little disingenuous to say that alcohol is this evil substance when pharmaceutical abuse is just as bad. But we're not protesting Walgreens coming into the county or Walmart having a pharmacy. I'm... Maybe I'm missing something on that regard.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries forward, and none with one commissioner not here. Item number six, four on the agenda tonight, sales tax update. No, excuse me. Item number three, solid waste franchise agreement, Mr. Josh Mitchell, solid waste director.
Good evening, commissioners. Here tonight to request approval from the board for a five-year extension to the Republic Services franchise agreement. This agreement includes all residential and commercial hauling of solid waste, transportation and disposal of the county's MSW to Foothills Environmental Landfield, and beginning soon, hopefully, the initiation of a countywide curbside single-stream recycling program. With this extension, Republic has offered to waive the CPI increases for our transportation disposal contract for the next year, and also waive the CPI increases on commercial So I'm here to answer any questions. At the last meeting, I was sat in May, Commissioner Mayberry asked me to check on different prices from competitors of Republic, I guess you would say, as far as residential... As far as residential service, waste management told me that they probably wouldn't even mess with Alexander County. Their nearest yard is Gastonia, so it makes no sense for them to drive a trash truck all the way over here to pick up a few trashes, I mean, a few households' trash. Uh, as far as their thirty-yard, thirty-yard roll-off rental, um, this is just how they had it set up on their website. For a thirty-yard roll-off box for three days and three tons of material, it's four hundred and sixty-seven dollars. That same service with Republic is four hundred and four dollars. The current, uh, rate we have, uh, that they are proposing with, which will include residential trash service once a week, residential single-stream recycling service every other week, will include two clearly identified bins, one for trash, one for recycling. We'll be able to take more material with this service, and that rate will be twenty-four, twenty-nine per household per month. Uh, and if you have GDS Service Now or Republic Service Now, and you're renting their cart, you pay twenty-two ninety-nine a month. So, basically, for a dollar and thirty cent a month, you'll be getting a whole nother service. They provide you with a can. It's going to be an automated service, um, with the truck that has the arm on the side, come by and picks the can up, dumps in the back. So, one thing we'll be asking of the citizens is everybody's going to have to use the Republic cans if you use their service. I don't know if you ever rode around the county on trash day. There's people just throwing their trash bags out, beat-up trash cans, animals can get in it, tear it up, causes a litter problem, looks terrible. Uh, this way, on trash day, there'll be the same cart rolled out to the curb, and it'll look, look real nice.
It does look a lot neater.
Yeah.
It really does. I mean, it's a-
Well, it's like, you know, if I drive to work on Thursday morning, coming down Liledown, that's when the trash truck comes through there, and it's at every home down through there, it's just bags of trash sitting on the side of the road. So.
Then you have to go back and pick it up if it-
Right. If, if the boss tells me to. So, and I checked this service with a competing company in Iredale County, which they would be able to do business a little cheaper in Iredale because their tonnage fee is less, and it's more densely populated. And their fee for the same service with trash pickup once a week, curbside recycling every other week, and providing the cans, was twenty-three eighty-four. So, we're looking at, you know, fifty cents there, somewhere in there. Plus, we're a more rural county. Uh, and the last thing I'll bring up is Republic and Waste Management are huge companies. They own all the landfills around us. Um, and for those who don't know, we have a transfer station. So, we basically, the trash comes into our transfer station, we load it on trailer trailers, then it goes to a large landfill in Caldwell County. If something were to go wrong with Republic, or they decided they didn't want to accept our waste at the landfill in Caldwell County anymore, the next nearest one is at the Charlotte Motor Speedway. Well, Republic owns that one as well. So, basically, the nearest landfill to us that is not owned by Republic is in Johnson City, Tennessee. And we're looking at an increase of somewhere around a quarter million dollars a year it would cost us to truck our trash that far. So, uh, with the franchise agreement, we get a better tonnage fee for the transportation and disposal at the landfill. We're able to keep the other rates competitive for a rural county. Uh, and something I'm really excited about is adding this curbside recycling countywide. Uh, right now, we're sixteenth in the state for per capita recycling. And I think this, this would really help us get on up, keep climbing, climbing the ladder. Uh, you can take more material with it. We'd be able to do all plastics, plastic, you know, rigid plastics as far as buckets, your TV dinner trays, things like that. So, uh, I think this is a, a good thing to be able to offer, and, uh, the people don't have to do it. If you don't want it, you can still use our convenience centers. So, hope I'm not trying to oversell this thing.
You're not trying to oversell it. I just got to kick out the TV dinner trays.
Yeah. Hey, that's plastic. It can be recycled.
Back in time, you know. I'm sorry. I just couldn't help it. I mean, I, I needed that, okay?
Oh, that's good.
Thank you.
As long as you're smiling, I'm all right.
Smile. Thank you.
But I'd be happy to answer any, any questions if I can.
Josh, I've got a question, and it's not necessarily about this. This, based on your answer to, uh, Mr. Mayberry's questions, I think this is probably a good rate. But something you had mentioned when you were here previously, uh, is at the convenience centers now individuals, I mean, if you're, if you're not prepared to answer this tonight, that's fine. But now you have to separate your glass, your plastic, and, uh, metal cans and so forth. When do you think you're going to convert to that one dumpster, if you will, holding all the recyclables?
As soon as I can. I was kind of waiting to see, to get past this, and then, you know, it might take us a month to get ready, to get everything set up, to kind of switch that over. But trust me, I'm going to do it as quick as I can. I don't want to, I don't want to tell you a date right now, but it's something that I'm really looking forward to getting going, because it's going to save people. Uh, I think people will, uh, participate a whole lot more, because, I mean, I'll be honest with you. I don't like sorting my recycle when I go to the convenience sites, you know? And this way, you know, you go to the convenience site, you dump your trash in that bin, then you take all your recyclables, dump in that bin, and you're out of there.
Yeah.
You know, so I think it'll, it'll get people in and out quicker. Um.
Maybe increase the participation rate.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Because it's, it's going to be a whole lot simpler. Plus, there's going to be more material accepted. Uh, your glass, everything goes into one, one bin. So, I think it's the way to go. This is the, the, uh, I don't want to sound like a trash dork, but, uh, the future of waste management is a single-stream recycling, and, um, that's just the way to do it.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks a lot.
You good?
Are y'all good?
Well, we'll find out.
But I think that's all. I mean, I'm-
In and date with TV trays, I mean.
I'm talking about the little microwave dinner trays. That's what I was going with.
Uh, does anybody have any questions?
No, I don't have any.
Please be answered, ma'am.
I entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the presentation by Mr. Mitchell on the contract with, um, Republic Services Franchise Agreement. That's a five-year extension.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor indicate raising your right hand. Motion carries forward. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Item number four, sales tax update. County manager, Mr. Rick French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet, you have two, uh, sales taxes reports. First, let me say we don't have an overhead tonight. Um, we were going to work on a little bit better system so it could be seen by the audience. Um, in the present form, it's just too much information on the page. Through nine months, we had received two point six million dollars, which is a little below where we need to be. Uh, we had budgeted three point six million dollars for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen budget. We're pretty close to where we were last year. Um, we're at two million, six hundred and seventy-three thousand. Last year, we were two million, six hundred and ninety-nine thousand, so, um, we're not far off that number. But the hold harmless number's still over a hundred thousand dollars, and so that's running a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. On the second page is the summary for ten months. So, we have, again, we have two more months of sales tax revenue coming in. Uh, we stand at a little over three million and eight thousand dollars, which we're right at eighty-three percent, which, again, the number for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen is three point six million dollars. And we're within sixteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine, uh, dollars of last year's sales tax numbers. It's, we're currently, again, at three million and eight thousand dollars. This time last year, we were at three million and twenty-five thousand dollars, and we're still running about a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, uh, behind on the hold harmless. So, I'll be glad to try to answer any questions about the sales tax reports, Mr. Chairman.
I think we just need to hope that the next couple of reports are pretty good reports. What do you think?
Yes, sir. I think you're right.
Mr. French, in the legislature, are they not, uh, what, what, there's some changes they're talking about doing to our taxes, and I don't know that they've come out with anything concrete yet, have they not?
No, sir. They have not.
And it looks like they're running out of time. So, it looks like we're going to stay where we're at.
Yes, sir.
That would be a very good thing.
It would be.
Yes, very good. Thank you. Item number five tonight, board appointments and reappointments. I'd call on Mr. French, the county manager.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Uh, for the Smoky Mountain Center, County Commissioner Advisory Council, appoint Larry Yoder, and for the Western Piedmont Council of Government, Region E Aging, uh, Board, reappoint Phil Thorson for two years. We still need to, a commissioner to serve on the Western Piedmont Council of Government, MPO, RPO, Transportation Advisory Board, and there's also several vacancies that, that are listed on your, um, information tonight.
I entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve, uh, the appointment of Larry Yoder to the Smoky Mountain Center, and also, uh, Phil Thorson to the Western Piedmont Council of Government, Region E Aging Commission.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. So, that you all will know about this, uh, Smoky Mountain Advisory Council. This is the one thing that has come about because of, uh, they want a commissioner from each district or each county.
Each county.
Each county to be represented on this board, and they will serve as an advisory board. They will not actually be on the Smoky Mountain, uh, uh, Mental Health Board itself. I think it's going to be very interesting. The first meeting will be held in Asheville in conjunction with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners.
That's correct.
Fall meeting. And at that time, we should be able to find out some things about what's going to happen with mental health. And also, it'll be a good time for us to, uh, uh, be educated in what the, uh, state government has done as far as the legislature and, and passing all the laws and, uh, different things that they're going to pass.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I was going to, uh, if, if you want to do this tonight, I'd go ahead and volunteer to, uh, take the Western Piedmont Council of Government Metropolitan Planning Organization and Rural Planning Organization Transportation Advisory Board position. And I know Mr. Marshall, uh, is there.
Y'all represent it?
Yeah.
Absolutely. We do.
Uh, still meeting during the day on Wednesdays?
It's, uh, three thirty Wednesday.
Three thirty.
You're welcome to come, uh, this Wednesday at three thirty.
Three thirty Wednesday.
This week at three thirty? Uh, gosh, actually, I can't make it. Um, but I will be at the next one.
We need to make that.
Well, and I, I will, uh, I'll move, I'll move that we approve, uh, Commissioner, uh, uh, in, in his, uh, capacity to be on these two committees. Thank you very much, sir.
I know. Nobody else wanted it, so.
Put Mr. in the daytime. Uh, you do a good job, though. Now, a second. Motion's made in second. Any discussion? All those favoring indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Good job. Item number six, Budget Ordinance Amendments, number forty-three through forty-eight. Mr. French, county manager.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Budget Amendment Number forty-three is to increase governing body budget for additional retainer fee from the law firm of Smith Rogers, P L L C, for law enforcement, legal services, to increase governing body budget for self-insured, uh, medical claims, uh, expected for the remainder of fiscal year two thousand fourteen. The insurance claims paid in excess of premiums charged to departments are accounted for in expense line items, self-insurance medical claims expenses, to increase the governing body budget for workers' comp claims based on the unpaid balance of open claims, to increase detention center budget for inmate, uh, medical bills through June two thousand fourteen, and to increase EMS budget for estimate of NCAAC administrative fee for EMS Medicaid Cost Settlement Program. That's Budget Amendment Number forty-three. Number, Budget Amendment forty-four is to increase animal services, uh, budget to purchase two cage banks for the shelter with donation, donations revenue, to increase extension service budget for the additional one hundred dollars received from the Nourishing North Carolina Garden Grant, and to increase the library budget for aid to public libraries, grant funds received in excess of original budget estimate. Budget, uh, Amendment Number forty-five is quite lengthy, but it's to budget for fiscal year two thousand fourteen wellness program payments to eligible employees. Uh, Number forty-six is to budget for fiscal ye, fiscal year two thousand fourteen wellness program payments to eligible employees. That's in Solid Waste Fund. Number forty-seven is to adjust the budget estimate for sales tax hold harmless funds to school system based on year-to-date receipts. And Budget Amendment Number forty-eight is to increase the sheriff's office budget for purchase of used boat, motor, and trailer for five thousand dollars from state surplus property agency and the purchase of, of equipment. Equipment and installation costs are estimated at thirty-five hundred dollars. The boat and related items will be paid for with funds received in prior years from the unauthorized substance tax distributions.
Mr. French?
Yes, sir.
Got a question about that one. I'd be, uh, how many boats does the sheriff's department have?
They have one.
So, this would be their second boat?
Yes, sir.
And what is the nature of this, not, and, and I know we can't question the sheriff. I mean, what is the rationale behind a second boat?
I'm not really sure, except to know that, um, probably a continuation of what they've been doing with the current boat. I, it's got some age on it, so I'm sure it's just a replacement.
Fair enough.
These are also funds, as you, as you're aware of.
I entertain a motion to approve the Budget Ordinance Amendments.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I move to approve Budget Ordinance Amendments, uh, Number forty-three and through Number forty-eight as presented.
Motion's made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? There being, excuse me.
I, I have just one question, sir.
Okay.
Mr. French, and I don't mean to put you on the spot for this, but, um, Budget Ordinance Amendments forty-three, are any of those appropriations, um, big, being taken out of the fund balance that we created with the tax increase?
No, sir. This is all out of the current budget.
Okay. That's fine. That's the only question I have.
Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Item number seven, other business. County manager, Mr. Rick French.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just a couple of things to mention. One is all of you received tonight a finance report dated June twenty-third, which gives you an up-to-date, um, financial picture of the county, um, for the budget year two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. Um, we also received, and it's also in your packet, uh, an invitation to the one-hundredth birthday celebration of the Hidden Light Center Lucas Mansion on Thursday evening, June twenty-sixth, from five until seven P M. And I also have a couple of items, uh, contractual things to discuss with you in closed session.
I must say that when, when, uh, Diamond Jam cut the building, uh, horizontally in half and moved and created the third floor, actually built the second floor on top of the first floor. I was there when that happened, by the way. Just wanted to tell you that. That's supposed to be a joke, by the way. But nobody's laughing, so I won't act. A poor attempt at a joke.
Okay. Uh, I entertain a motion with, or I'll make the motion. Are we going to close session? I need to approve the consent agenda. Thank you very much, man. I entertain a motion to, to, uh, approve the consent agenda as is.
I make a motion. We approve the consent agendas, item A and B. Uh, if I need to read them, I will. May twenty-ninth, two thousand fourteen, work session minutes in June second, two thousand fourteen, regular commissioners' meeting minutes, item B, the Home and Community Care Block Grant, uh, parentheses, H C C B G, in parentheses, S F Y, two thou, uh, fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Gentlemen, we'll, uh, go into adjournment, and we will go into closed session and, under North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, paragraph A, to discuss contractual items only, we will reconvene for the primary purpose of adjournment only.
Make that in form of a motion.
Make that in form of a motion.
Second.
All those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you very much.